All right, we got ten. All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. All right, we're gonna queue up channel thirty-five first. Thank you so much. We're up there. Good morning. This is the Los Angeles City Council. We're at the Grand City Hall of Los Angeles in the John Farrow Chambers. Mr. Clerk, this is the thirty-first day of January two thousand fourteen. Let's call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonner, Buscagno, City of England, or Fonte, Suez Arca, Corretz, Cacorion, Labanze, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, West, and ten members present and accorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cacorion moves. Ms. Martinez seconds.
Mr. President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fonte moves. Mr. Bonner seconds.
Very good, sir. Before running through the agenda, there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file items one A, one C, one D, one E, and one F, inasmuch as the liens have been paid. Further, the department wishes to continue item one N, N as in Nancy, to February fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
Without objection.
Very good, sir. We also have a request from member to receive and file item number seven.
Okay, it's a request on that. Without objection, is that all right, Mr.?
Very good, sir.
All right, what's before us?
Mr. President, that brings us to items one and two. They're items noticed for public hearing. We do have cards in on items one G and one K.
So we'll call those specials with the rest, though?
Item number two, perhaps we'd like to hold on the desk until...
Hold on the desk, under your recommendation, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Items three and four are items which public hearings have been held.
Three and four. Members, any specials on three and four? No specials on three and four. Let's open the roll on three and four. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, items five through ten are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
So for consideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So out there before us?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items six, seven, eight, and nine.
So we'll call those special and lay them on the table, and then it's on the balance, let's vote on those. Any specials on those? Any comments, council members? So on the balance, Mr. Clerk, take over.
Very good. Those would be items five and ten, sir.
Five and ten. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations.
With presentations, yes, we could write there. And we have presentations right now? Mr. Corretz. Mr. Paul Corretz.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Two weeks ago, the city council approved a reward of fifty thousand dollars for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of the person or persons responsible for the murder of Harvey Cohen, which took place in Encino on September nineteenth of last year. This morning, we are joined by Harvey's wife, Sandra Cohen, and their son, Harris. To each of you and all your family, I want to tell you how terribly sad we all feel for the tragic hurt and loss that's been suffered, and how much we want to see this dreadful crime solved. With us as well are two investigating officers, Captain William Hayes and Detective Frank Curio. I personally want to thank them and the entire LAPD for the great amount of dedicated work that's been devoted to date to solving this crime. On September nineteenth, at Harvey and Sandra's home, he was still up around two-thirty in the morning, working away at age eighty, when whomever committed this crime got into the Cohen's home and shot Harvey Cohen. And so we mourn his death and seek the apprehension of anyone responsible. That's why we move forward with the rewards motion at the request of the LAPD. Reward officers, offers don't always lead to crimes being solved, but they sometimes work, and it's great when that happens. And in this instance, along with the city's reward of fifty thousand dollars, there's an additional twenty-five thousand dollar reward being offered by the family. It's important that we thank the media for all the help and care in getting the word out. And now I'd like to ask Captain Hayes for any insights about the investigation that he would like to share at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Corretz. As has been indicated, we're at a point and juncture in this investigation where we need to elicit the public's help. We believe that the reward that Councilman Corretz has offered will assist us in that, that this is a tragic crime where an individual in his home was assaulted and succumbed to those injuries, and we want to do everything we can to bring this individual to justice. We believe, hopeful that this will stimulate more interest in the community and that they will come forward with that. And I thank you for your assistance in moving this investigation forward.
Thank you, Captain.
And, Mrs. Cohen, would you like to say a few words as well?
First, I am here to announce that our family is adding a twenty-five thousand dollar reward to the city's reward on the same terms and conditions as the city is offering its reward. Most importantly, our family lost the most wonderful husband, father, and grandfather of six. Someone came into our home and murdered my eighty-year-old, defenseless husband. What kind of person would do such a thing? That person is still in our community and is a danger to everyone watching this press conference. Whether you do it for the reward or not, please provide the police any information you have to get the murderer off our streets. Thank you.
On behalf of myself, the Encino community, and our entire city, I offer our condolences and our earnest wish that by apprehending whoever is responsible, we can help achieve some closure and justice for the family. If anyone has information to share, please contact the LAPD. The best phone number to do that is two-one-three-four-eight-six-six-eight-nine-zero. Thank you.
Mr. Corretz, thank you, and our condolences to the family. We ask the public's help in this. Captain Hayes, always. Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. Buscagno? Very good. Okay, we're gonna continue with the gentleman. We want to lay his presentation on the desk. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Let's do the first item, one.
That would bring us to items one G and one K called special for cards.
Yes, Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez. One K. Are we gonna have the interpreter's assistance, please?
My name, Geronimo Daniel Sanchez.
My name is Geronimo Daniel Sanchez.
And I want, I've got to pay the bill. Oh.
I'm going to go ahead and pay the bill.
You're gonna pay the bill. Thank you. We appreciate it. If you could see to Charles from our Department of Building and Safety, we appreciate it. We have one more card on this item. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's open the roll. On all of that, he's gonna pay it. We got to vote on it, Alan? Over the roll?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. President, we would now be voting on items one B, one G, one H, one I, one J, one K, one L, one M, and one O.
So it's on the balance, it's open the roll. Mr. Cacorion?
One G, given the fact that the gentleman wishes to pay the amount, I'd like to hold the lien for one week, please, so that if he does pay and complete that obligation, we won't need to file the lien.
Continue one G without objection.
And, Mr. President, one week is February seven.
Good. Good. And Mr. Sax, I do not have a card on you on item one, so I don't have a card. On the balance? Please. Mr. Sax, you want to speak on one? Please come to the podium. Mr. Clerk, let me notify that the cards I had, I pulled incorrectly, so I do have other names. So let's call Arnold Sax.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Arnold Sax. As, what was really interesting, and I'd like to thank Councilman Weisar, but he's not here today, last meeting you had a few liens that you were addressing. And what was, what I really wanted to thank him about was his commentary where he mentioned that he gets some lien notification from the county of Los Angeles. And he questioned the gentleman from Building and Safety, who's leading the discussions, about how their people are notified. He asked about a letter being sent. And so the gentleman mentioned that he, they send a letter to the owner. So along that line, I just was wondering, do they send just a letter to the owner? Or do they send a letter to the registered owner? Because if they can find the liens on these buildings that are in disrepair, then that explains volumes about why there's no letter sent out about foreclosed property. Because your ordinance is initiated against banks, but normally the foreclosed properties are then turned over to mortgage companies. And I don't believe your ordinance mentions anything about mortgage companies and their leaving rundown properties to be run down. But nevertheless, if you have a lien, who would you send a notice to? And another person came up here and spoke about how his lien was about graffiti on his building. So I'm wondering, if anybody ever takes a tour on a blue line towards Long Beach, the area between, I don't know, Washington and Rosa Park Station, you'd be surprised how little of the original buildings show up because they're so covered with graffitis. It's amazing that nobody has an opportunity with Metro, the county, or the city to do anything about the graffiti on the blue line.
If you have a question, you could talk to Charles Calabah from Building and Safety. We also have another called Ramon Sanchez on that card. I believe that Mr. Sanchez is asked to pay that. And also, Ms. Ruiz? On Collins Streets in North Hollywood on this item? Thank you. This is one G.
Good morning. Yes, Uvaldo Ruiz, my name.
Please go ahead. It's been continued one week, but if you want to voice your concern, please do.
I do want to pay. I'm gonna pay. I'm gonna pay right now.
Very good. Charles will help you over there. Thank you. Have a good morning. Item two, Mr. Clerk, do we have to vote on any of those?
Mr. President, we should first vote on it. The items for, within item number one that are remaining are one B, H, I, J, K, L, M, and O.
Okay, on the balance of that, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So ordered. Next item. Item two has been, two has been continued two weeks.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, two weeks brings us to February fourteenth. Would you like to continue that without objection, sir?
Without objection.
Very good, sir.
Next item.
That brings us to item number six called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sax, Dr. Williams.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I first set foot on the Hollywood Walk of Fame in nineteen sixty-six. I've lived there since nineteen seventy-six. That's thirty-eight years. This is money down the rat hole to the Hollywood Mobility Trust Fund to develop parking management strategies. That means fifteen or thirty-page report, thirty-eight thousand dollars, while the Hollywood Walk of Fame is literally falling apart. Now, proposals to develop modified parking districts in Hollywood, this is what they're doing. When you go to Hollywood, there is usually parking on the street, and it also has the highest rate of break-ins, car thefts, and robberies out of autos. So pay your five dollars, or else they're gonna break into your car and it's gonna cost you hundreds of dollars. But you built a gigantic, gigantic garage parking lot, five stories on Vine Street, next to the, next to the big theater there, and Ricardo Montalban Theater. It is half-empty. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cacorion. You always correct me if I'm wrong. That whole, that particular parking structure is losing millions of dollars a year. You could set off a cannon in that parking structure and not in any way damage a car. So what they're trying to do is jack up the cost for you to park free, so there's no more free parking, so you'll be forced to spend your money in that white elephant next to the Ricardo Montalban Theater. It's true, if I'm lying, fifteen of you have the choice to correct me right now. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Arnold Sax, please. Arnold Sax.
Just thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. This is interesting, modified parking districts in Hollywood. Will you be doing this, modified parking districts throughout the city, in other council districts? I know that when Expo Phase Two is being built, there are no parking lots being built for the people to use Expo Phase Two, you know, to park and commute. So will you decide to get modified parking lots for the part that goes through the west side of Los Angeles? Because that's gonna create quite a hassle, unless, of course, all you expect all these people to walk to the stops. But who is Civic Enterprise Associates that they're gonna get eighty-eight thousand dollars for this management strategies? I thought you had the staffs and the personnel for strategies. Wouldn't you have included the parking strategies when the city council was considering selling the parking lots to solve the budget? That was like two years ago, three years ago. These people are gonna come up with a different strategy. If they can come up with a different strategy for the city, maybe you could put them on the DWP and have them find out about the forty million dollars that's missing in the pension, in the nonprofit fund. Because evidently, with all the...
Talk on the issue, Arnold.
With all the discussion that's going on about parking, parking districts, parking meters, parking lots, these guys are gonna come up with a new strategy. It's like reinventing crap. Nope, you don't do that.
Dr. Williams?
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. Thirty-two Neighborhood Council, also Sierra Club Angeles Chapter Transportation Committee. We're quite interested in parking strategies. Why isn't this incorporated into the mobility element of the general plan revision? Department of Transportation and the Planning Department are supposedly doing something about parking, a strategy. There's also a matter that this is a sole-sourced contract, no bidding. It's only ninety thousand dollars, but can't we do better than that? I mean, there's nobody willing to provide a competitive bid for a ninety thousand dollar contract for just strategies? We would like to see it expanded much more to the entire city, a parking strategy? Because we in El Surino, we suffer from the sixty thousand to eighty thousand cars going along the Huntington Drive freeway into downtown every day. Where else in the United States, a four-million-person city, has three-dollar, four-dollar, all-day parking in the downtown area? Parking strategies? We need a lot more parking strategies. But is this the way to do it? Do it as part of the mobility element of the general plan revision. It's on right now. And maybe you don't have to pay ninety thousand dollars. Thank you.
No other speakers on this issue? No speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. This time for a special presentation from the great councilman of the ninth district, and also the great councilman of the fifteenth district. Would you please, for a presentation? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Today, we have several folks here to honor not only a feat for my district, but also for the city of Los Angeles. Today, the Institute of Sustainable Infrastructure will present the city with the Envision Platinum Award for the South Los Angeles Wetlands Park. That park, some of you may know, is on east, between East Fifty-Fourth and East Fifty-Fifth, between Avalon and San Pedro. Completed in February two thousand twelve, the South L.A. Wetlands Park project consists of a nine-acre park with four-point-five acres of treatment wetlands. The treatment wetlands are supplied by stormwater runoff from a five-hundred-and-twenty-five-acre urban watershed. Stormwater is conveyed to the wetlands by underground systems that remove trash and other soils, solids. The treatment wetlands work by removing stormwater nutrients and pollution through natural uptake into treatment plants. Treatment plantings also include over nine-hundred, nine-thousand-five-hundred native California wetland plants. Treated stormwater drains from the wetlands back into the storm drain system and eventually into the Los Angeles River. Here today to tell you more about the award is Ed Gatto, President of the American Public Works Association.
Good morning. My, my name is Ed Gatto. I am the National President of the American Public Works Association, and it is my honor to present the Envision Award plaque today on behalf of the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure. The American Public Works Association, in partners with the American Society of Civil Engineers and the American Council of Engineering Companies, created the Envision Rating System in two thousand and twelve. Since its launch, the rating system is playing an increasingly important role in creating sustainable infrastructure. For this Los Angeles-based project, the city of Los Angeles, Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering, and the private partner organization SOMOS, worked together on the South L.A. Wetlands Park project, and became early adopters of sustainable design and engineering by welcoming the opportunity to pilot the Envision system with the city of Los Angeles. As part of this event, it is my pleasure to present to the city of Los Angeles Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering, represented here today by Deborah Weintraub, interim city engineer, and SOMOS Company, who provided the planning, in design, and management services on the project, as represented by Vice President and Sustainability Director Sean Vargas, both here today to receive this award. The Envision Platinum Award, South Los Angeles Wetland Park, presented to the city of Los Angeles Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering, in recognition of contributions to this project. I present it to Deborah Weintraub. And the Envision Platinum Award, South Los Angeles Wetlands Park, presented to SOMOS in recognition of contributions to this project. Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to join you all today to make this presentation. And now I will step back and turn it over to Deborah.
Council members, it's with great pleasure that I'm here today to accept this award. This represents with your leadership the next step in our, in our effort to build truly sustainable environmentally sensitive projects. Starting in two thousand, we adopted LEED as a city for buildings, leadership, and energy environmental design. At this point, we have forty-nine certified projects and thirteen in the pipeline. That's an enviable record of sixty-two projects for which we are using LEED. In adopting Envision, as an early adopter of Envision, this is the third project to be rated nationally, and we've received a platinum award. We partnered with our consultant SOMOS and with our other city staff members, the Bureau of Sanitation, the Bureau of Contract Administration, and our contractor, Fordy C., to get this project built. We intend to continue to use Envision for civil projects. Right now, we are in the process of applying this rating system to the Sixth Street Viaduct, our single-largest capital project at the moment, and to the Taylor Yard pedestrian bridge that goes from Taylor Yard to Elysian Valley. I'd like to acknowledge some of my staff, my partners, my staff members, and staff members from sanitation and Con Ed that are here. If they'd raise their hands, Frank Rinaldi, Ken Redd, Julie Allen, John Saldine, Adele Hajakalil. I'd also like to acknowledge Arash, the Higian from Fordy C. And again, in closing, it's with great pleasure that we accept this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you, and thank you, Deborah. And as Chairman of Public Works Committee, I stand to thank the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure for the Envision Platinum Award. I'd like to commend a number of city departments that played a key role in this award, jointly, who jointly worked on this project, including the Bureau of Engineering, Bureau of Sanitation, Department of Recreation and Parks. I'd like to thank SOMOS for their inventive planning and design of the park, which literally broke new ground in our city. Also, I want to thank those who shepherded this project, former councilwoman Jan Perry, who, together with now Mayor Eric Garcetti, authored Proposition O, and tirelessly championed this project. this project, seeing it through to the finish line. The South Los Angeles Wetlands Park is a shining example of Proposition O dollars at work, and in this emergency time of drought, finding new and innovative ways to conserve and clean stormwater is more important than ever. Again, thank you to ISI for recognizing our city and the departments with this honor. Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno, if you can hold for a second. Mr. Fuentez has some comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buscagno, and Mr. Price, and all of you for this demonstration. I wanted to just stand up briefly and thank all of the city departments and agencies that were involved with this project. This is precisely what Los Angeles needs to be doing as we move forward towards water. It really flows into, pardon the pun, the whole one-water concept and what it is to capture, restore, and reinvigorate our water tables with projects like this. And what a project like this does, in addition to the infrastructure improvements, it restores the habitat and the community that becomes more friendly, more habitable. Migratory birds begin to visit locations like this. It has multiple, multiple benefits. So this really is a tremendous award. Thank you for those who are recognizing Los Angeles's efforts. Keep your eye on us because we're gonna be doing more of this. And thank you to my colleagues, and obviously to our predecessor, Jan Perry, because these projects, her stewardship as Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee, she really helped set Los Angeles on the path. But thank you all for your participation.
Thank you very much, all of you. And SOMAS, we certainly want to thank you. Deborah, please?
One more thing. Today is Cora Jackson Fawcett's last day. I failed to recognize-
It's Cora Jackson. We gave her a resolution the other night.
That the Public Affairs Office has helped us from the beginning with this project.
Good job, Cora.
Thank you. It was not intentional. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Cora, you got two minutes. What do you think you want to say? You can criticize us, too.
Just to close out, want to gratefully accept this award and thank Councilman Buscagno and interim Director Weintraub. We certainly need more projects like this, not just in the 9th, but citywide. That's an exciting example of how working together works, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Price, and to all the group there, as we look at this great city of ours, you have public safety so important, public health, public education, the public amenities, but public works makes it work. We want to thank you all, so give them a big hand. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number seven called "Special for Cards."
Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks.
I don't know why you won't show my Jewish face, but no Jews allowed on close-ups. We're at number seven, I assume, and this concern... Is this number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Number seven concerns street furniture. Let me tell you what they did. And remember, I have no interest in these people. I have interest in you people out there watching it. This poor gentleman, I won't even mention his name, it would be embarrassing to him, has to pay the city $5,992.50. That's half the cost of sidewalk repair and tree removal in front of his property. The key word there is "in front of his property." It is not his property. But here in L.A., the city makes you responsible for the tree. Now, you remember that great poem? "Poes are made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree, and only the gods, punk gods up here at City Council, can make you pay as a private citizen for a tree that is not on your property." Now, you gotta see it from this gentleman's point of view. If he fights it, he's gonna have to hire a vulture lawyer. The vulture lawyer isn't gonna talk to him without a $10,000 retainer. This is a tree shakedown. Now, sometimes you shake down the trees and apples come out. But here, what comes out is poisoned fruit. No one gives a damn over there at the press corps here, the so-called press corps. I mean, they're all wearing Garcetti sweatshirts, but I want you to realize when they want to get you, when they want to harm you, they come and say your sidewalk is repaired and you are the property owner. And if you in any way look crooked at anyone on your sidewalk, you can't do that. You'll be arrested for harassment. Hollywood Highlands dot org.
Mr. Sacks, please.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Actually, the reason I talk about this item, it's the language. I believe two weeks ago you had an item on your agenda. You had a lawsuit with the ADA, and your ADA lawsuit mentioned right-of-way, sidewalks to be repaired, right-of-way. So if your legal standard, your legal representation, your legalese mentions right-of-way, why not put right-of-way on your agendas? This is like the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, 10th time. It's a language thing, and if you are involved in a lawsuit or litigation and you used the wrong form of wording, you lose. This is just complete disregard for informing the public correctly on the correct terminology when they have a problem. People want their sidewalks repaired? No, you want your right-of-way repaired.
That completes your comment, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Clerk, no speakers on the Q? Open the roll.
Mr. President, again, there was a request to receive and file this matter.
And I support the request. So open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Legrand, will you step to the podium for a moment for a quick introduction of a very special guest and delegation? Our Director of City Planning in and for the City of Los Angeles, Mike Legrand.
Good morning, council members. We have a very special delegation from Austria here to visit the City of Los Angeles. I'd like to introduce the President of the Austrian Federal Economic Chamber, President Liedl. He's here to say a few words and welcome you. The delegation's made up of media representatives, TV networks, local newspapers, as well as political leaders from out the country of Austria, and we're very happy to have them in the Planning Department. I'd like to introduce you to President Liedl.
Councilmen, dear members of the council, may I express the best wishes and congratulations from Austria, from Vienna? We're living in a globalized world, and therefore, although many miles of distance, we are neighbors. We share the same philosophy, you in Los Angeles, we in Vienna, sustainability, and we are sharing common values, and therefore, we have to learn from each other and cooperate with each other. And that's where we are here. We wish you good luck.
Dagishen, everybody. Welcome our group from Austria. Thank you, Mr. Legrand, and the Planning Department. This is the ongoing program of outreach between our city planners and represented from around the world to learn best practices. Another good welcome. Thank you.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number eight called "Special for Cards."
Eight on the desk for a minute, please.
Very good, sir. That would then bring us to item nine called "Special for Cards."
Call Mr. Walsh. Pass. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. So ordered. Okay. Item number eight. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, the clerk is informed, you have one minute. Thank you.
Make one false move. Okay, number eight. This concerns tour buses. Now, tour buses are not a big problem in Hollywood. They bring tourists here. You don't need to make the tourist buses put in a headphone-based system. All you have to do is tell the guides not to babble on and talk forever. Some of them talk for the entire 45 minutes. Only talk on the important things. Don't speak when you're in a crowded neighborhood, and they don't speak, they don't talk in my neighborhood when they pass by. And lower the volume. I don't think that the small-business people with the tourist bus should have to spend millions of dollars putting in earphones. No. Just use common sense, which is rare here at City Council. Don't make them put in earphones and headphones. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right. No speakers on the Q? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Mr. Clerk, we have a special item now, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Recess and go into the special.
Very good, sir. Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscagno, Sidio, Angler, Fuentes, Weiser, Caress, Corian, Labas, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. Mr. President, the item number 11 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So open the roll. For consideration, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Clerk, tell us what 11 is about.
Mr. President, that involves establishing a city position to oppose HR 2642 and S 954, which significantly cut the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program.
Thank you. We do have comments. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or just go to JWalshConfidential, and for information purposes only, Chairman of the Draft Viora Gosov for Waxman Seat Committee. Okay, this, you're right here. This is, in other words, when you're right, I'm the first person to say you're right. We have to put pressure on Congress. This cutting of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, that's food stamps, okay? I was on food stamps for six months in 1969, and they do a good job. This, incidentally, over time, we're talking about, and Pelosi, that piece of crap, is in favor of this. They're not going on this because she doesn't get her money, and the Democrats don't get their money from poor people on food stamps. They caved in on this, and as a result, the people are going to have their food stamps slashed. And now you're in favor, and I think you should tell your lobbyists to push this. There are too many backsliding Democrats who have bent over and spread their cheeks for the fist of the Tea Party. And that's why we absolutely are 100%, and I'll never be on food stamps. I've got a nice, good government pension, and I worked hard for it. I worked hard for it for a quarter of a century, and I'm never gonna have to be on food stamps. But there are a lot of people out there, and the Democrats ultimately treat minorities as trash unless they hold up the minority politicians. But the public, the rank and file, and this, of course, this food stamp cut, who is this gonna hurt? Middle-class white guys? No, we know who this is gonna hurt. Working-class, poor minorities. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Byron Barajas. Okay, so... Consideration of Resolution Relative to Establishing the City's Position to Oppose HR 2642 and S 954, Which Significantly Cut the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Isn't it awful? How many people are on this program? Millions, isn't it? It's pretty bad, isn't it? I only say these things because I appeal to the emotions of people. You know, when you cut people from any kind of supplement anything, you have to consider, we are a republic, aren't we? Don't we cohere to the general welfare? I mean, to cut back on food stamps? I mean, what do we really say, Mr. City Attorney, who wants to turn his face away from me? Very good. It's awful, isn't it, Mr. City Attorney?
He is not talking about this item.
Please speak on the item. Thank you.
Well, it's connected, because I'm trying to figure out something here, because this is just a part of the symptom, isn't it? The other symptom, of course, is when I point these issues out, it reflects what I've been saying. Maybe I should bring that up in general public comment.
Okay, next up on item 11, Arnold Sacks, followed by Matthew Sharp.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And this federal legislation that you want your lobbyists to adhere to, I don't hear anybody from the City Council discussing the pork that goes along with the farm bills that this cut is part of. I believe there are some funding for farm bills that are pork in a lot of different states, and that this is a rider as part of that bill, that one would pass and the other would go along with it. So what is the council's stance on unnecessary funding as it relates to huge corporations getting farm assistance? Oh, I don't know, for genetically-modified foods? That seems to be a big deal. Or fuels, essential ethanol, the growing of corn for biodegradable fuels? We don't have a stance on that, so this is just a go-along, you know? They call, I think they call it in the state legislation, gut and what? Gut and what? I'm sorry? Gut and, thank you, Mr. Corian, I appreciate it, but you do understand, gut and amend. Thank you. So this is essentially the same thing, only it's add by subtracting, or subtracting by adding, however you want to look at it. Take a stance on the pork barrel legislation that is such an essential part of the federal government, and then you'll actually be doing something.
Okay, our final speaker on this side, Matthew Sharp.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Matthew Sharp. I work with California Food Policy Advocates, partner with many of your offices on a number of the important initiatives to address nutritional disparities and food assessments throughout the city and throughout your districts. And I'm here to offer our strongest support in favor of this resolution and in opposition to the legislation racing through Congress that will have some dire impacts on constituents in all of your districts. It is our estimate that 100,000 families across the county, little less than half of that within the City of Los Angeles, will lose benefits when this is enacted, as is expected with the Senate to vote in a matter of days. It's important to acknowledge that as part of the voice that you all have raised about this, most of the House members from the City of Los Angeles voted against this bill on the House floor a couple of days ago, reflecting consensus and synergy about the needs of your constituents. I appreciate your adding your voice to that. It has made a lot of difference to us in our efforts to work with those offices to try and stop this terrible legislation. The major cut has been described in the media as closing a loophole and creating a reform for savings. For all of you who visited food pantries and food banks in your districts, I think most of you, you know those families aren't loopholes. There aren't reforms to take out of their budgets. They really are struggling to put nutritious food on the table. And so there's work we can do once this passes and once these cuts are made to try and increase enrollment in the program, to improve coordination with the county, particularly to capture households that are getting subsidized medical insurance as part of the Affordable Care- Care Act. They could be getting more food assistance as well. We look forward to working with all of you to examine the opportunities to better connect the city's infrastructure through family source centers and community partners, to increase the value of the federal nutrition safety net in our communities to help fight hunger and improve nutrition. So thank you for your unanimous vote in favor of this resolution and for your leadership in bringing it forward. Adios.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, for your attention to this very important resolution, which would oppose House Resolution two-six-four-two. This measure, as proposed, would have some considerable impact to the working families of the country in California and Los Angeles. We know that what is being proposed here would cut about eight hundred million dollars a year, and it would be a eight hun, eight, it would cut eight hundred million dollars a year from what is currently proposed to be an eighty billion dollar a year program. That would total to about eight billion dollars over ten years in cuts. This bill will cut benefits to eight hundred and fifty thousand American households across the country, more than a third of which are in California, costing them about ninety dollars a month. According to the United States Department of Agriculture, an estimated fifteen percent of households are food insecure. We've worked diligently, colleagues in the legislature, to make sure that we're subscribing as many people as possible to this very important program. We've been able to reverse the trend by then-Governor Schwarzenegger, to make it feel as if this was a criminal proceeding by having people have to be fingerprinted and audited quarterly. We've rolled all of that back. And now, unfortunately, the federal government, as proposed, is adding some additional cuts to a program whose tax dollars are our very own. We send this money to Washington, D.C., and it's rightfully our money, and as a result, they are, for lack of better words, using the terminology of closing loopholes to cut food to families who desperately need it. The measure is going to be heard, be in front of the Senate next Monday. It passed out of the House by a two-hundred-and-fifty-one vote to a hundred-and-sixty-six. The, there's, there was only one member in Los Angeles County, colleagues, from the congressional delegation, that voted in favor of this cut. The rest, I think, through our advocacy, our education, was able to convince folks to make sure that they voted properly here, saying no to the cuts. And so therefore, colleagues, I ask for your support to send a message to our continued efforts in Washington, D.C. to oppose this cut.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Seeing no other members on the queue on item number eleven. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very good. That is approved. Do you want a forthwith on that? Forthwith?
Very good, sir. Do you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes, let's do that.
Very good, sir. That brings council back to general public comment.
Okay.
Public comment, Brian Barajas.
I mean, I could go for an hour if you want. All right, thanks. All right, look. I wanted to just mention this, because I think the issue here, it's very simple. Today at 5:00 P.M., Linda LaRouche will be giving a webcast at larouchepack.com. I think no other person in history, he's ninety-one years old, but he's sharp. He, he is the, the individual who I echo. I echo him. Why not? If he's right, if I determine myself to say that he's right, then he's right. That's my decision. If he's, if I say that he's saving the United States, that's, that's my decision, because I figured it out. He wasn't a criminal. Bush put him in off, in, in jail. Bill Clinton took him out of jail. So what is this country about? What are we about? If we can't even find a way to establish a sense of reality, then we do have a president who goes, what, gives a State of the Union, well, it wasn't a State of, of Union dress? That wasn't, that wasn't reality. Look at, look at Kennedy. He was frightened, wasn't he? Look at the video. He was frightened. He knew what this president is. And we, we are, we are a nation, but I, but I, but I think if people are going to realize what we are, I think they should go to the website, larouchepack.com. I can give you another indication, keisha rogers dot com. She's running for Senate. She is also, in Texas, she is also pushing for the impeachment and Glass-Steagall. It's going to be a shockwave when she wins.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H.I.G.H.I.A.N.D.S. dot org, part of the draft, Antonio for Waxman Seat Committee. The best place for Antonio Vierigosa is three thousand miles away from L.A. That's why we want him in Congress where he can do no harm. Okay, let's, let me tell you what really happened, okay? Nobody just suddenly gets up the way Waxman did, four months before a primary, a hundred and twenty days before a primary, never giving any indication that he was leaving, and suddenly decides to leave. He says, "I've been thinking about it." Let me tell you, he went to his doctor. He got some very, very bad news from his physician, and his physician told him, "If you want to live, you better get out of Congress now and take care of yourself." That's what happened. But you know, all our congressmen think they're immortal, and they won't tell you the real reason that he's out. Wendy Gruel, she jumps in in two hours. But remember on January seventh, what she said about running against Sheila Kuehl? She said, "My gut tells me not to run." So the, her intestines, this time, told her to run. So if you vote for Wendy Gruel, you are voting because Wendy Gruel's intestines told her to win. She's a serial candidate. She's got a, a campaign monkey on her back. Anybody but Wendy Gruel for Congress. Gil Sidiyo Senior sent out a memo recently, "Fifteen million dollars in low-cost housing HUD fund money is in, is being held up as we speak by the federal government because your records are out of order." If I'm lying, Corian or Sidiyo will tell me he didn't, you didn't send out that memo. HollywoodHighlands.org for a lot more of the truth. See the TSA agent in a pool of blood on my website.
Dr. Tom Williams?
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. thirty-two Neighborhood Council and father of a dead son. Two years ago, or almost two years ago, my son died of leukemia and a few other things. But before that, about three years, four years ago, eleven people had joined the donor system as to how can you help other people who have leukemia, lymphoma, and various other diseases? Eleven people had committed their matches to helping others. The city of Los Angeles, theoretically, about a year ago, put in a request council file for investigating possibility of putting a little box on employee cards, saying, "Would they be a donor?" Don't know. Whatever happened to that, because nothing ever came. CD thirteen changed. So we have a situation where one of the most diverse populations in the United States. I am married to a Chinese lady. If we had a child, it would be a problem finding any donor suitable for that child. Well, we could have a whole bunch of things, but we have one of the best medical plans for our employees in the state. We have Kaiser Permanente looking at genes. It's the future, but we're now, and we have a lot of people that need blood donor, these stem cells. So please revisit the possibility of having employees do a donor card for stem cells. Thank you.
Ruth Sardoff. Ruth Sardoff.
Good morning, council. I'm here today with actually a written statement, and I'll make a few comments as I go. A win-win approach, seeking sustainable solutions in a time of distress. The first thing that came into my head after reading A Time for Truth, which is the report from the twenty-twenty Commission, which you empowered, I think it was last April, and the first thing that came into my head after reading this report was what it chose to evaluate and what was left for another day. It was as if some issues are too big, or too polarizing, or maybe just too overwhelming to deal with. It is these issues, as well as the traditional, that requires public dialogue at this time. The twenty-twenty report with charts and statistics to update us on how the city is doing in meeting its traditional responsibilities is most welcome, especially as the city and its people face hard times. More is needed, however, for the Commission to success, to suggest solutions in its second report, as was requested of them. Solutions that fail to acknowledge and deal with growing inequalities and the vast human suffering in our city, the county, and the world are hardly solutions.
Thank you, Ms. Sardoff. You want to pass it out to the sergeants? They will have it for you. Next public speaker, Omar Baldwin. Come on up, Omar.
Hello. Good, goodie, good morning. My name is Omar Baldwin, and I'm just a public servant. And today, I would like to let everybody know, the viewers and everyone in the audience, that Cindy Sheehan will be in Los Angeles. Cindy Sheehan is an anti-war activist. She lost her son in Iraq in two thousand and four, and she's running for governor of California now. She's against fracking. As you guys know, Jerry Brown is trying to, you know, frack his life away, so we're trying to, Cindy Sheehan is for, you know, against fracking. And Cindy Sheehan will be in Los Angeles at the Peace Center on Sepulveda and, no, La Cienega in Venice. And, yeah, but I'll, man, that's enough for Cindy Sheehan, but, man, I can't be for self, you know? I want, I want to change the world, you know, create peace on earth, and I'm, I'm trying to help Cindy Sheehan. She's with the Peace and Freedom Party. And me, I'm trying to, I'm trying to start a five-oh-one-C-three organization and propagate peace to the people, you know, on the TV, on the buses, on the billboards, on the bus stops, you know, in schools, everywhere, and then stuff like that. And I'm working with a few organizations, the L.A. Progressive, the United Teachers of Los Angeles, all the, all the organizations at the Peace Center on La Cienega in Venice, where Cindy Sheehan will be tonight at seven, seven P.M. I'll be there, and I'll be, you know, talking to everybody. But peace, 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 peace on earth. Peace on earth is basically everybody eating, everybody having a house, you know, and, you know, the nation's working together.
Thank you, Omar. Bobby Cooper. Bobby Cooper's not here. Mr. Clerk, note the card. Anthony Manzano?
Thank you very much. Good day, council members. My name is Anthony Manzano, and this is the first time I come to speak to you guys this year, so happy new year, fellas. What I want to do is mention that we've had some great improvements in our community of Rose Hills, thanks to much efforts of the council member who is not here present today, Mrs. Councilmember Wezar. With his efforts and assistance from his staff, over the years, we've had significant improvements regarding our streets, our parks, some of the local businesses. As a Neighborhood Council President, Vice President, and currently the Treasurer, which I'm not representing today, I've come up with several ideas on how we could make our community vibrant, vital, and a positive part of the city of L.A. One is, is we target some of the vandalism. We remove the graffiti in our area daily. We have volunteers out there. The city provides the paint. They give us the brushes, and every single day, we have a crew out there removing the graffiti in our community, which makes our community possibly one of the first ones in the city that could claim to be graffiti-free, or I, what I like to say is, we sort of eliminated the graffiti, because we're out there taking care of it. What I'd like to touch on, though, is something that's very important to all residents in the city, and that's emergency preparedness. I'm also the Station Forty-seven CERT leader for the Fire Department, and what I'd like you council members to do is work with your CERT team members in your communities and make sure that we have bins in our communities, because right now, we work through the Neighborhood Councils. Dunn doesn't want to give us funding for this because they considered emergency supplies. We as CERT members need this material. So with your leadership, maybe you could work with or find these CERT team leaders in your community and provide them the needs, the services they need, find the funding, put a bin out there, put two bins out there, give them blankets, of course, not the perishables and water and food like that, because that comes from the Emergency Management Department. But the citizens, the neighbors, the residents, and the CERT team members need this material out in the streets, and with your guidance, I'm sure it could be taken care of. I will be working on this with my council member, Jose Wezar. Thank you, guys. I know the weekend is coming up, and also, Valentine's is coming up. I don't know if I'll be back by then, but happy Valentine's, everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Henry Marine?
Good morning. Yeah, I saw Janice Hahn at the president's State of the Union speech, and reminded me, after Mr. Dion informed the members of this council that it was illegal to shelter money of public employees or reduce their pay and not account for the difference, Janice Hahn made a real simple statement. Anyone going to the bargaining table that failed to go to the bargaining table, as required by law, would be on the menu. And anybody who went to the bargaining table and then to account for the money left on the table was going to be on the menu. And guess who's on the menu today? Every one of y'all that's having y'all saw at conversations right now. Didn't nobody ever tell y'all to look at somebody when they're talking to you? Apparently not. Y'all good at ignoring paragraph eight. You're good at ignoring a lot of stuff. So by your ignoring those things, you're ignoring your fiduciary duties. And by ignoring your fiduciary duties, you're making material misrepresentations to deny workers' benefits, which is a felony in the State of the Union. So when you gonna wake up? Mr. Sidiyo told me, he never read paragraph, read the MOU thirty-five. He had his staff do it. But what y'all get paid for? At least in, in bail, the people did their own work, and they have a big staff of people to go along with it. So actually, they were cheap labor. Pay them eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's all you have to pay. You ain't got to pay a billion dollars for each staff. So I think we getting screwed in L.A., so y'all better change how you do business in L.A. That's all. I'm not trying to get y'all in jail. I just want y'all to change how you do business. But y'all can't change, so you can go to hell.
Bobby Cooper, real quick, Bobby.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you? My name is Bobby Cooper. I'm here to let you know that I, after three to four years of research and investigation into my situation with regards to my business, I just found out my business is worth $2.5 million. I believe that's just in one account. I have several bank accounts in Los Angeles. Some of your city officials and Los Angeles police officers have taken over. I expect some help from the federal government in this matter. I'm no longer looking forward to the state, city. I've been victimized by the city, state, and the county government. I'm still trying to find where my mother's body is. You know, they've collected the insurance on it. They won't let me know where her body is. Nobody is saying nothing. The last thing I know, I was assaulted at Longwood Nursing Home, and they mentioned the word Bernard. Do you know Bernard Parks? I said, "Yes, I do know." This gentleman had something to do with the last business that I had. I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but I don't have housing. I got a business that's worth $5 million, and I can't even rent a place to lay my head down in this city. It's a doggone shame. I'm 71 years old here. Been here all my life, businesses, working, et cetera. And now I'm no longer considered a citizen of this United States after paying my taxes. You know, in eternal affairs, got $1 million of my company's money, you know, to solve the situation. They go on vacations. But it's all right. God will handle it. I believe that.
Thank you. All right, now let's have Arnold Sachs, our last public speaker of the day, from Lenox, California.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Labons. We tend to represent. Lo and behold, the DWP is back in the news again. The DA wants to go after what happened to the $40 million. And this gentleman, Steve Lopez, is concerned about the $40 million mystery. And I would ask him to be concerned about the 1,500 personnel mystery, where a few years ago, the city transferred automatically 1,500 personnel over to DWP without batting an eyelash, in the middle of the recession. How'd they do that? Maybe somebody could check. Or maybe they could check on the five pay raises that the coalition labor got for the city council, that the city council, nobody actually knew, that cost the city about $150 million minimum. Maybe they could check to see where that mystery money came from. But what's really fascinating about this DWP and the nonprofit, everybody wants to know where the money was spent, but nobody really wants to be concerned about how the money was gathered. And what's fascinating about that is I believe the Supreme Court is now hearing a court case about whether people who are part of a union have to pay union dues or not. And yet here, the city with the DWP, and Metro also has a nonprofit, is requiring the public to make donations to nonprofits. Requiring, taking public funds and using them for nonprofits. I wonder what the Supreme Court would feel about that? Would you be required to pay money to a nonprofit that you don't support? That being said, if you sent money into DWP, write it off on your taxes. It's a donation to a nonprofit.
That completes the public comment at this time. Mr. Clerk, anything before us?
Mr. President, counsel has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Mr. Sadio.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm happy to announce that our President, Barack Obama, has appointed our very own Natalie Reyes to the Board of Trustees of the Woodrow Wilson International Center. We all know Natalie. She used to work here on the floor for Councilmember Mike Fuhr. And then later, she worked as Deputy Chief of Staff for Mayor Jim Hahn. She's a proud Bruin alumni, two degrees from UCLA, and is representing us well and now in Washington, soon to be appointed, soon to be seated, as a trustee for the very prestigious Woodrow Wilson International Center. We should applaud both the President and Natalie for their service to our country.
Well, congratulations to Natalie. What a wonderful person she is, and that's such big, great news. And congratulations to the President for getting such a fine member of our community passed.
That's right.
Good job, Mr. Sadio. Any other announcements? Members, I just want to announce, too, I don't know if all of you know, or all of you read the sports sheets, you know, Richard Sherman, that great defensive back for the Seahawks. His father worked for the city of Los Angeles, member of the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation. And we want to choose the team that has some home-team flavor, and the Seahawks seem to have it. But also, we have the great Denver Broncos. So everybody have a good, safe weekend and enjoy it. Ms. Martinez.
Motion. Are we there yet?
So no other announcements? Let's stand for adjourning motions. All rise. Adjourning motion, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, colleagues. I'd like for us to adjourn in the memory of Salvador Orellano, who was 53 years old and a devoted father and hard-working man who lost his life in a wrong-way accident with a drunk driver on the 134 freeway over the weekend. His son was with him in the vehicle and fortunately survived, only suffering from broken bones and bruises. Having worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District as a custodian at Van Nuys High School and a member of the staff for 16 years, Salvador was very much esteemed by his colleagues. A friendly, hard-working man and father of three, Salvador will be missed, and he's survived by his family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Members, I want to introduce and ask we adjourn in memory of Pukish Parik, who was a DWP in the water section. He was a great guy who really was inspirational and tried to find solutions. He suffered injuries that devastated him from a motorcycle accident, but he still came to work. But it caught up to him. He had a beautiful wife and family. I ask we adjourn in memory of Pukish Parik at the water side, Dr. Parik. And also, members, I believe we should all adjourn in memory of Tom Sherrick, the very, very special member who Mr. Garcetti chose to help be the advocate for keeping filming in Los Angeles. And I know you may have seen his obituaries, but a wonderful man. Many people spoke on all sides of everywhere in the work that he has done in film and television, but also how he was a leader. He survived by his wife, Marilyn, and his daughters, Barbara and Melissa's son, William, and he'll be sorely missed over 10 grandchildren. Now, for the last adjourning motion today, Mr. O'Farrell.
Colleagues, it is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Vicky Chang. Born Myung Soon Park on December 16, 1949, in Seoul, South Korea, she was the eldest of four daughters to an architect and homemaker. In her formative years, she experienced the Korean War firsthand and was keenly aware of the poverty and tragedy that stemmed from the impacts of war. Growing up, she knew education was the key to a better life. She made it a priority to study hard, pass the college entrance exam, and be successful. She was accepted into the highest-ranked women's university in Korea, where she graduated with a nursing degree. Soon after, she met Hong Chang, and they married, and together made the decision to move to the United States. In 1974, with $200 to their name, they immigrated via Honolulu to Orlando, Florida, and eventually settled in Los Angeles. Mrs. Chang then changed her name to Vicky, short for victory, and went on to pass the California nursing exam on her first try. She worked as a registered nurse for Cigna for almost two decades, taking on two, sometimes three, jobs at a time to make ends meet. One of the hospitals she spent many years at was the Cigna Hospital at the current site of the Silver Lake Medical Center in the 13th District, located in historic Filipino town. She was a huge fan of Western music and saved up to purchase records of The Beatles, The Beach Boys, Paul Anka, and every other popular artist in the '60s and '70s. Eventually, Vicky and her husband saved enough to purchase a house for their children, daughter Jeannie and son Raymond. She raised them to be good people with big hearts and a willingness to help others in need. She would often tell her kids, "I give because I can, because I should. If I couldn't, I wouldn't." But that would be so frustrating. Mrs. Chang passed away suddenly last week in her sleep at her home on January 23rd. Vicky Chang was a wonderful wife, mother, and grandmother to two children, Noah and Maddie, and mother to my Chief of Staff, Jeannie Minn. May she rest in peace.
And Mitch, I'd like to second that, as well as all of us will be on it. Members, let's serve the city well, all members. Serve the city well. Continue. Every day's a blessing. Thank you, and thank you, clerks, for today's work. This meeting's adjourned.